I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. All board members are present. I'd also like to welcome Chris Decker, our student council president and student rep to the board. Chris, carry on a 30-year tradition with this role and welcome.
Thank you.
Next, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented. By Mike.
Second.
Second by Tom. If there's anyone on any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull off now would be the time to do it. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries seven zero. Next, we have our consent agenda, which includes the check wire transfer and dispersment summary, resignations and non-renewals as listed, donations of $175 from the Prior Lake Lions Club for the new teacher luncheon on August 24th. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
By Todd, second by Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries seven zero. And next, we have Laker Pride and a special presentation this evening. So, those join me up front.
Good evening. We have a tradition at Laker Showcase that is recognizing people in our community that truly make a difference. And tonight, we have a very special recognition of a volunteer who has really given everything she has to make sure that our schools are the very best they can be. And that person is Carrie Kleeman. We'd so love it, Carrie, if McKenzie can push you up here so that we can say just a few words about you. Would that be okay, or would you rather stay there? Okay. She's on the road. Here she comes. We've got some big courts, if you could come over this way. Here she comes. Perfect. Carrie, we have so many things to say about you. And if you look out at all these people, each one of them would like to say something also. And so, we're having a little reception for you that's being hosted in the room just next door to us right after this recognition here, where everyone here that's come to wish you well and good health are here, and they'd like to be able to visit with you. So, that's going to happen right after these words. You're welcome. First, Stacy Ruel would like to say something, so she has it all prepared.
Hi Stacy. Thank you all, I'm overwhelmed. I've had the pleasure of working with Carrie on two referendum campaigns in 2007 and in 2008. And as many of you know, the hardest thing to do is to get someone to volunteer to run something. At our first meeting, we were looking for volunteers to run some big campaign events, and I was preparing myself to have to ask a few times or twist a few arms. Well, I asked, and a quick hand shot up across the room. It was Carrie's, and she said she would handle the whole event and more. I thought, wow, this lady rocks. And I knew I was going to like her right away. And as the campaign moved along, it was evident that if Carrie was running the event, I had no worries because she had thought of everything and handled it all with a smile. Her efforts were instrumental in us passing our referendum in 2008. Carrie, your dedication and commitment to the community of ISV 719 is awesome. And we thank you for your countless hours and drive you put forth to make our schools a better place for everyone. I would also like to recognize Carrie's family, Charlie, Skylar, and McKenzie. Thank you for sharing her with us. I know there was probably a few missed dinners, or some missed hockey or baseball games on those nights that your mom spent with us. We thank you. And I am honored to present you with Laker Pride. And I know Mike.
Thanks Stacy. I'm trying to think back, but you know, when I was asked a week or so ago if I would say a couple of words. I think I've known Carrie for just about my entire tenure on the board, which goes back to January, February of 2004. And right around that same timeframe, I saw the notice that the SPAN group, the Synergy Parents Action Advocacy Network was getting together. So, I said, you know, maybe I'll stop in and see how the group is doing. And Carrie and a few others in the group, after the meeting, came up and shared their thoughts. And the word that I always, you know, advocacy is one thing, but I think Carrie always embodied persistence within that advocacy. And there's a lot of chuckles, but you know, but I think it was respectful persistency. And I know that, you know, there were some things that Carrie, you know, really had dreams and goals and desires. And the thing that I always appreciated and really respected was she didn't take no as a final answer. And then, she would always be working for, alright, if it's not right now, what can we do at least at this time? But also then, keeping the vision and the plan and the ideas. And certainly, the Sage program that I think is a manifestation, not only of Carrie's work, but many others, but you know, I know was a goal and a dream of Carrie's. And I think that without the work that Carrie did and many others, that program probably still would be an idea and a vision as opposed to the reality that it's been. And so, that's just one little small piece. But you know, I think Carrie's enthusiasm and her passion and her desire to see this school district be a better place, I think, has rubbed off on, I mean, it's the reason why everybody's obviously in this room. And it's great for me as a board member to see people here celebrating something and being positive because oftentimes, when the room is this full, it's for other reasons. And so, I think this is just a great thing, and it truly is a testament that, you know, the power and the ability of what one person can do to be able to bring all of you out here to celebrate and to acknowledge what a difference one person has made. So, Carrie, to you, my hats are off. Thank you.
Well, I have the honor of presenting Carrie with the Laker Pride. And let me just say, I met Carrie during our first strategic planning session. And the testament that I can give is anytime you asked somebody to lend a hand, she was always willing to lend both. And I, not only has she affected, you know, the programs that we have here, but thousands of students that have gone through our system, and a legacy that will influence thousands of students, you know, to come. And we don't say thank you enough, Carrie, and we're proud. We're proud that you've been a Laker with us. And so, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for your dedication. And we appreciate you. Thank you for being a Laker.
And I don't know if you'd like to say something or not. I've never known you to be at a loss of words, however. I'll give you a minute. I'll give you a minute. Collect your thoughts.
My mom is here, she's in the beach.
There she is.
She's probably thrilled about her skirt. Please keep your skirt on, Mom.
And your little sister.
Yes, and my sister DeeDee is here from Rapid City, who's been so helpful in our healing as a family. And my nephew Tim, who's in a big competition and made a sideways trip here to see us. And the kids have been having a riot outside before school starts. Loving every minute of the last days of summer. I hope you all are too. And I see so many helping faces here that help us get in and out of rooms and move wheelchairs into cars. Thank you all, thank you all. And lots of people who have driven me to the doctor, to the hospital, and brought us meals even when I didn't know it. Sometimes I'd turn around and I'd be closing the refrigerator door, and something would slip behind me, and I didn't even know it. The person had come and left to the house. So, thank you all. It's just, everyone's generosity is just beyond measure, and it's so appreciated. And we love you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, we're here tonight to thank you, Carrie, for all you've given, for all you give, your heart and all of your passion for students and for children's learning. And we know that your legacy is living on and on and on. You know that we have secondary advanced placement programming, largely in part to Carrie's passion and persistence of never giving up, that we couldn't just, you know, have Sage Academy, that we had to have a bridge to somewhere. Do you remember those words? We can't have a bridge to nowhere, we have to have a bridge to somewhere. It doesn't matter if it's perfect, but we have to do it. And she persisted and persisted and was one of the many voices at the table, but so important. But the first time I met Carrie was right after I was asked to be superintendent, and she was working with a foundation, so, working so steadily, almost daily it seemed like you were in the office, working on something, getting ready for a meeting, and helping our foundation, our educational foundation, get off the ground. And boy, were we lucky to have you do that for some of those first emerging years. And I see people here that have all been on the foundation with us. And what a voice you've been at that table also. And there are so many other tables where you have sat and made a difference. And so, we are just so grateful to you for giving Prior Lake Savage Area Schools this wonderful legacy of not only Sage, but advanced programming, and that passion for students, our educational foundation. What have I forgotten? ECSE! Is that the reason they got you here? And it all started with early childhood family education. And when your own children were little, you were involved in that.
I was, and I got in referendum campaigns right away, talking to early parents, because that's where you gotta get 'em. If they don't understand it when they're little, they don't get it when they're high schoolers.
So, her passions are many, and she has made a, truly made a difference. And that's why it's such a pleasure to have this special recognition of Carrie Kleeman tonight. And we have a little reception right next door, cake and punch, and lots of people that want to say hello to you. So, McKenzie's going to try to get you out, maybe out this door and around, and then you can be there when they come in to visit you. Would that be okay?
It'll be okay, alright.
She's got cake. Congratulations, Carrie Kleeman.
We're just going to take a couple-minute recess while everybody gets ready for the reception.
Do you know, oh, is she the Kleeman kids? Probably not. McKenzie is a ninth grader, maybe? I think ninth grader. Her mom really is amazing. Well, my nutter in Australia spilled boiling water on her hand. So, I got a text saying, "Don't panic." She's in Australia. Okay, I'm in the air, but I've, I'm, they've just given me morphine. And she had a hot water bottle, which you've probably never seen before, old-fashioned rubber, red rubber thing, that has a little thing, and you'd fill it with plain water. And then, you'd wrap it up. If somebody had a sore ankle or whatever, you would put that on.
Good job, you guys.
Well, the microwave didn't work, and so she had to get her little boy there. They'll know on Friday.
It was like a jersey, but it wasn't even a Prior Lake jersey or a Minnesota jersey. It was just elastic, it was there yet. Kind of baggy shorts.
Shoes. Long as it wasn't a Green Day bag.
Those are normal, the hookup programs, you see all these resignations and then all these hires.
Well, Mike Scherle's resignation is he's now coaching Kill, and it's a Vokers. Yeah. Dream come true. Yeah, yeah. Dream come true for him.
That's a lot of people.
Now, we get down to how many people usually here for him would be.
I didn't know.
You know, oh my gosh, this is really a big deal.
You get that on here?
Yes. This one right here. Only if we're changing boundaries, changing start time. Those are the times when we have that many people. And then, it'd be twice that many, but, and not happy cameras. Great person. Think they're going to close the door for us too. It's been a lot.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Are we on? Okay. Next on the agenda is open forum. This is the time in the meeting when we reserve, that we reserve for residents to address the board on issues not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to personnel items, candidates for employment, Matt.
Alright, first, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
We have a motion to approve the candidates as presented. By Redd, second by Lee. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries seven zero. Leaves as an absence.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence. With a quick note that there is a change from the original board packet that came out that would move Dave Penetti's proposed leave from personal to extended. And with that, I'm seeking board approval.
We have a motion to approve the leaves as presented. By Tom, second by Todd. Any questions?
I just have one question. What does that mean then? Effectively, what does that mean if we move it from sabbatical to extended?
What this means with that move from sabbatical to extended, it really is not going to have an impact on the district. It will have an impact on how Mr. Penetti is going to be able to petition the Teacher Retirement Association to buy back a year of service credit so that he can still retire on a track with the other teachers that he would have started teaching with. And so, that does not come at any cost to the district. It is a cost borne by the individual. And so, this does not have an effect, frankly, on the district.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries seven zero. And then, you have substitute teacher pay rates?
Before that, I believe that we do need to rescind Mr. Penetti's leave that was presented at the, at the last board meeting.
Sorry, I thought that was part of the original motion.
I'm sorry, I don't believe so. I think that it needed to. Okay, so, that would be separate then.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to rescind Mr. Penetti's original leave request? By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries seven zero. So, do we have to reapprove the current one?
No.
Or are we covered now?
Good to go.
Now, can we talk about substitute teacher pay rates?
Indeed. Alright, it is my recommendation that for the 2011-2012 school year, we raise the substitute pay rate by $5 for a full day of subbing, and by $2.50 for a half-day of subbing, from 105 to 110 for a full day's work in subbing. And a couple of notes here. Number one, these rates have not been increased since 2005. And in that time span, other districts have caught up with and exceeded the rates that we are currently paying. And we're finding that we really need to be competitive in order to meet the staffing requirements that we have on a daily basis during the school year. And so, it's for that reason to make sure that we're adequately staffed that I make this recommendation. And with that, I will seek board approval.
So, I have a motion to approve the pay rates as presented. So moved by Tom, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
Are we raising only the full-day rate and not the half-day?
No, the half-day rate will be raised by $2.50 from 52.50 to $55.
Okay, because in the board packet, I don't see that mentioned anywhere or in the agenda.
When I went back and looked at previous rate increases, the only approval that went through was the full-day rate increase. And we've always paid half of that for a half-day. And so, that's why I didn't present it that way. But certainly make that amendment that it will be at $55 or exactly prorated by 50%.
And that'll keep us competitive with Lakeville for that half-day rate?
You know, it will, and we're finding that we're not having as much trouble filling those half-day slots.
Okay. Thank you.
And as I said, this is really driven by the market.
Okay, thank you.
And I assume this doesn't have a material impact on the upcoming year's budget at all?
We reviewed how, what the impact will be. And as far as professional development, that will not be impacted as there's a definite limit as to what our budget is for professional development. However, it will have a small impact or impact on our general fund budget for the increases in for sick leave or personal leave. That will have an impact on our budget, which we will adjust with our final budget in December.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries seven zero. We have no old business this evening, so next on the agenda is the AdSIS grant report. Mr. Kern.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Gruber, thanks for your time this evening. Just wanted to update you where we were with our AdSIS grant. As you saw in the letter that we received from MBE in your packet, that we were approved for almost $349,000 in funding this year, which is an increase from 2010, 2011, when we were approved for $95,000. And the difference being that we are adding a third grade for reading for this coming school year, and we will also be attending to reading for grades six through eight. And we will also be attending to math in grades four through eight for the AdSIS grant. And just a quick review, that the AdSIS grant is designed to intervene for students who need additional academic and/or behavioral support to succeed and remain in the general ed environment so that they can avoid qualifying for special education services in the future were these interventions not available. So, it's, in essence, a proactive piece where we pull kids out from the general ed environment and provide them extra support in the form of reading, and this year, in the form of math. In the past, and last year was our first full year of implementing our RTI model in grades K2. And that reading intervention basically took the form of a 30-minute above-and-beyond period where a small group of students, three, four, or five kids, would work with a teacher and get extra reading interventions. And I just wanted to share some interesting data points from those interventions this past year. We needed to carry out a mid-year evaluation and turn that into MBE. And we needed to carry out a end-of-year evaluation and also turn that into MBE by August 30th of this month, which we will do. And prior to that, we obviously applied for this school year. We would have been notified earlier of this if not for the state shutdown, which is why it's not occurring till this point. Last year, we carry out AdSIS in grades K2 and 7, 8. We served 410 kids. And out of those 410 kids, 189 demonstrated significant improvement, which is 46% of the population that we serve. 74 of the 410 exited the program and no longer needed the services. So, 18% of the kids that we worked with, we pulled them out, provided the intervention, collected data weekly on them. And because of the success of the teachers working with them, we were able to exit them from the program, and they went back to the general education environment and were able to participate in those reading, their regular reading curriculum without any extra AdSIS intervention. We will continue to examine classroom data we collected on a weekly basis for those kids that are receiving the interventions. Again, this is just a one-year snapshot. We're not saying this is a pattern or a theme. That's what we want to keep collecting the data for, to see what happens over a number of years. Perhaps these data points are specific to this cohort of kids. We won't know until we continue to collect the data over a multi-year type of period. And with this piece, our intentions are, again, to add third grade for this year, which will have a full-blown RTI model for grades K through 3. We'll begin taking benchmark data for grades 4 and 5 in the area of reading. And the teachers in grades 4 and 5 will start to begin experiencing some of the same professional development that the K3 teachers have already had in these areas of interventions. And we will begin AdSIS with grades 4 through 8. Our other intentions are to increase the RTI coordinator from .5 to 1.0. And this was our intention all along from the beginning as we tried to mirror those districts that have successfully implemented an RTI model. And so, with all of this, with all of these plans in place, another quick review is that whatever minutes we turned in and FPEs we turned into the state that we said we would dedicate to AdSIS interventions would then be funded, just like special education, which in effect lowers the district's cost for those positions. And so, that frees up funding that we can allocate towards other places, such as the RTI coordinator. And the piece that we've heard from the beginning, from other districts that have carried this out, is that those districts that have done it really well have had a data warehouse. And right now, we don't have that. But an RTI coordinator, working with our RTI committee, could help us do that and carry out professional development, carry out training for all the grades involved, and work with our RTI committee and myself and Jeff Monberg and Patty Green to pull all that together so that we would be able to implement this and continue the success that we've seen. So, that's the quick update in regards to the AdSIS. I believe it opened for any questions that you may have.
Yes, Tom.
You said that, you said, was it 43% showed improvement? Or something, 40?
46%.
46.
Demonstrated significant improvement. It was a five-point Laker scale that we determined anywhere from significant to some improvement stayed the same, some decline and a significant decline.
In a, in a program such as this, just getting it started, is that kind of what you had figured? Or the percentage, is that where you thought you would be? Or is it better than you thought? Or did you have any preconceived notion?
The gauge that we had, which was shared with us was from MBE, was their latest figures showed that they had 27% of their students statewide exit the program. Now, the thing to remember is that not everybody has the same. Now, the thing to remember is that not everybody has the same entrance criteria or exit criteria. So it's hard to compare apples to apples and compare exit criteria for different districts because the standards are not necessarily the same. That's why we want to continue to look at this over a multi-year period to see if that is in effect where we want to be. We want to get better and we want more kids to exit. But we want to be able to go back and look at the data and see what we can do on a day-to-day basis also with kids.
Any other questions? You mentioned implementing math as well? And did you, I'm sorry, forgive me, I can't recall. Did we have that last year, or is that new this coming year?
That's new this coming year. We're launching that with our flexible grouping at the middle level and then with extra math periods where kids are leveled out at the middle school also. And in the past, those, the AdSIS personnel, like I said, have consisted of a paraprofessional that can help with data collection and working with kids and working with teachers for data entry in both math and reading.
And is it map testing or that draws the kids in? Or is it the teacher recommendation?
It's a combination of those two along with what is called benchmark assessments, where they'll, all the kids in grades K three will take Ames Web benchmarks three times a year. And for the older kids, it's oral reinfluency. For the younger kids, it's phonemic and letter sound fluency. Those kinds of different benchmarks that are common in other districts so that, and they're all nationally normed. So we would look at those different kinds of data points so we're not just relying on one data piece to either consider a student for intervention or to exit them from an intervention. So classroom performance is obviously a big part of that.
Okay. Anything else? Yes.
I would just add that this, this year, with getting the amount of money that we're receiving, we'll be able to spread the value of the paraprofessional support in data collection really throughout all of our elementary and middle school level students. Some just in reading, but then the others in math. So we'll be able to really collect some good data as we move forward. And hopefully, we will really be making a difference in the life of these students and finding those numbers of students exiting rise as well as the number of students at high proficiency rise. So this couldn't be done without the hard work of our teachers who had had to demonstrate that they were implementing RTI first before we even be eligible for the first AdSIS grant. So they have continued to grow and stretch and learn new strategies to be able to pre-teach students and to give them that power half hour at the elementary that you've heard about. So they're moving forward with this aggressively, and it's their good work that has now allowed us to almost triple that number as we move forward into our year two of implementation. So, thank you for your work on this, Doug. Putting that grant together.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have student enrollment and staffing. Julie and Dr. Kern, sorry, Dr. Grover.
Yes, we talked about this at the August eighth meeting. When we received the federal jobs bill dollars in 2010, the highest priority for our school board was staffing and making sure that we were following the intent and the spirit of these dollars, and that was to put teachers into classrooms and to lower class sizes. And to that degree, last year at this time, we added three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to of staffing into our classrooms. We had staffed very slimly last year as well as we did this year. So to be able to put those teachers back in classrooms where there were high class sizes really made a difference. And at that time, the school board committed to do that again, to save that last three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and committed to teachers in the classrooms for 2011 and twelve. And on August eighth, I asked for two point five kindergarten sections to add the full day sections at Greenwood and at Westwood. And the school board approved that at that time. We also talked about some staffing options. We have a couple more places where there are some very high numbers. One is in our half-day kindergarten. Over the past two weeks, we've been getting more and more students. So those numbers have risen dramatically. And you can see those on the attachments in your packet. I'm recommending to the school board tonight that we add one point oh teaching staff to Edgewood and a paraprofessional to Five Hocks for their kindergarten, which is the teacher's choice and Mr. Bell, who is here, rather than additional staffing. And at Redtail Ridge, to add a one point oh FTE, where the class sizes are now at the thirty-two, thirty-three range and higher. And then at Glendale and Jeffers Pond, to add, not add a classroom teacher, but add a FTE teacher to just do reading and math for those higher class sizes. We will watch them, if they get to that thirty-two, thirty-three, we may have to shift. But at this time, it looks like the numbers are going to stay in the twenty-nine, thirty range. And that with the principals, Mr. Richardson is here, is one of the examples of believing that that will take care of the need for this year. They'll be able to really cut those class sizes down into smaller groups for reading and math, and then for the other content areas, they will be able to make it through. So that's the request. I have talked with Mr. Londer, high school principal, and both did Mr. Edwards and Mr. Koznetzoff regarding the secondary staffing. We really front-loaded our secondary in the summer, at the beginning of June, and they were working on their placements for this year, their schedules. They knew there were some areas that just weren't fitting. So we added that in as before we ended up with our total savings because we knew that we needed to make it right for this coming year. So over the course of the last two weeks, I've asked them repeatedly, how's it going? What's happening? And they have assured me that at this time, they're really solid in their numbers, but also in their class sections. So we're ready to go. That doesn't mean that as we get to second quarter, third quarter, or fourth quarter, that something might get a little bit out of kilter. So I'm recommending that the forty-one thousand nine hundred be put back into the superintendent's contingency. If it's needed, I'll bring it back to the board for approval, but it will sit there for this year. And then if it isn't used, it will just fall forward into next year, but I've already been committed since I've already spent my contingency in June to help offset some of these class sizes that were unfriendly. And then the last part of that is that this is the last year of the federal jobs bill dollars. And so as we look forward, we can't continue to wait until August and then place three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our staffing. So I'm recommending that this fall, we begin to look at elementary staffing patterns. And how can we do this differently in 2012, thirteen? So that in the spring, we're identifying those classes and those classrooms and grade levels that have those unfriendly numbers and matching them up, and also educating our parents and our staff and our students about the opportunities out there in both multi-aging and in combination classrooms and whatever else. We have some experts right here in the district that are doing it right now, that are in three of our elementaries. And we can rely on their skills to help us figure out what would be the best way to staff when we don't have the luxury of the federal jobs bill dollars in the future. But for tonight, I'm recommending that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as noted on the cover sheet, be commissioned to these purposes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing request as presented?
So moved.
By Lee, second by Rich. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries seven zero.
And I'm passing around now just what it looks like for the class sizes with approval. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is test scores update. Mr. Holmberg.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grover. I am here tonight to give a brief update on the science MCA test scores. You have in your board packet an overview of how students in Prior Lake Savage did at the elementary level, middle school, and high school level cumulatively, as well as comparison to 2010. And it's also broken out by building. In looking at overall this year, our students did perform well. We do consistently outperform state averages, and that is also indicated here as well. Due to the government shutdown, there are some things that we want to continue looking at from the standpoint of comparison to neighboring school districts. That information is not yet available, but as the reading and math scores become available, I will be bringing forward a kind of an addendum report regarding how we do compared to counterparts in the south suburban districts, as well as other districts of interest. In light of that, I did spend a little time today looking at a question that has come up at previous board meetings, and that's about cohorts. When you look at the document that's in your board packet, essentially, it's a snapshot, it's isolated, you know, student groups. When you're looking at, you know, 2010 proficient students versus 2011, you're looking at two student groups. And so at the board table this evening, I have taken a little bit of time to just do some cohort analysis, at least from the standpoint of giving you an idea really how our students are doing over the course of time as fifth to eighth, eighth to tenth graders. Looking back to 2008, to the present, and I have color-coded this, you can see that there are some, there are, there's positive trend going upwards. From our students in 2008 as fifth graders, again, to recap, take a step back here, students in science, fifth grade, eighth grade, and tenth grade take the MCA two science tests. So from that standpoint, when we're looking at our elementary in 2008, in 2011, as eighth graders, you can see that the level of proficiency has increased as well as from our middle school eighth graders to 2010 tenth graders, again, a sizable increase. Two thousand nine eighth graders to 2011, also a sizable increase. Just a couple things to point out here. These are increases we want to continue to see. We're happy with those results. We also know too that there are areas that we can do better, and we will work on improvement of those as we move forward into the school year. The bottom section of the document also indicates four years over the course of each building from 2008, nine, ten, and eleven. Again, this chart will show, these are isolated student groups, but looking essentially really where, how students are doing. And you can see some schools have shown sizable growth across their cohort groups. So we've shared this information with principals, and as we proceed through this school year, we will be continuing to break down these scores more specifically. This does play well into our new science curriculum adoption of National Geographic at the elementary, as well as at the middle school and high school. Biology curriculum was purchased this year, which is essentially the tenth grade test. We do have new Glencoe sixth, seventh, and eighth grade tests at the middle school, as well as the National Geographic at the elementary. So that committee will be meeting regularly. We will be breaking down these results, test specifications, and aligning what it is that students need to know in order to make sure that they have those experiences to know what exactly they are expected to know. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Is there any questions for Jeff? Yes, go ahead.
Jeff, I just thank you for giving us the time cohort comparison because I think that puts better context on some of the information we're saying. I mean, it's great to see that we're improving across the board, but it also, I think it's always been unfair to hold a building accountable. You know, it's kind of that whole no child left behind complaint that's been out there that, and we really should say, you know, where was the level of the student population when we inherited them at the start of the year? And what did we do to improve over that year? But fourth grade this year versus fourth grade next year is a little bit apples and tangerines. So I like that, and so my hat's off to the principals that are here, as well as your colleagues, to show that, you know, as I interpret this then across the board, we've really shown some nice growth, and so I think that's very positive. So, good job.
Any other comments? Okay, no board action is required, and we'll look forward to the next update.
Presently, reading and math, we still do not have those results yet. You know, and during the administrative report, I'll do a brief overview of the waiver process that the state of Minnesota has requested of the federal government for no child left behind. But right now, they're still projecting a September release date and once, for reading and math, and once those scores are released, we will be, you know, working diligently to get our heads wrapped around those results. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is policy. Sue Ann.
This is always the fun part of the meeting. We have for your second reading, the policy four thirteen on harassment and violence, and this relates to employees. This is a second reading. We had quite a bit of discussion about this at our last meeting and changed it format. Matt wants to add to that.
Well, I can answer the question that was posed at the last meeting, and that question was, why is race, color, creed, and religion not defined when the other protected classes are defined? And so I went back and researched that question. And in the Minnesota Human Rights Act, those are not defined. And that's really the governing document that we would use when addressing in Minnesota whether there's been a violation. And so to define what our legislature has not there would mean that we're putting our own spin on it, which is not something that we want to be doing in this kind of an instance where we're talking about state and federal discrimination. And so why the legislature decided not to strictly define those terms, I'm not sure. It could be that they felt that the general understanding in the public of what those terms mean was out there, but that's my best guess there. But we will be current with the governing rules and regulations that we need to follow.
So do I have a motion to approve second and final reading of policy four thirteen harassment and violence? By Todd, second by Lee.
She beat you to it.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I know, we were.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries seven zero. And next we have hazing?
Yes, policy five twenty-six is now termed hazing prohibition. And Jeff is going to speak to this one.
At the last board meeting, we went through this. I don't believe there were really any questions, so I don't believe there are any changes to this policy. I believe there was conversation on the next policy, so.
Okay, so a motion to approve hazing is presented. By Lee, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries seven zero. And then next we have bullying.
Bullying is five oh six point one, bullying prohibition. And we had a rather robust conversation about a paragraph under Roman numeral three, general statement of policy, and Jeff is going to speak to that.
I believe the question that was raised at the last meeting is really how far does the school district's authority extend for instances of bullying? And so in general statement of policy three, part A, we've removed the, we've removed that last sentence, which kind of distinguishes whether it's on or off. But in talking with our principals, and I think that was a question that came up, is at what point do administrators or does the school district step in? And I think, you know, the answer that, the general answer is, is that when these issues manifest themselves at school, on school property, our administrators are investigating and working with parents and students and authorities if need be in order to help resolve those situations. And so it is, when it manifests itself on school grounds within the school, that is when the school steps in to assist families and students during these situations.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the bullying prohibition as presented.
Some of.
By Stacy, second. By Lee. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I guess I emailed the members of the committee with my concerns about maybe adding a reporting procedure. And I understand that's a procedure more than a policy aspect. I am convinced that this policy is a strong statement. I am convinced that this policy is a strong statement that it will not be allowed. I just want to make sure that we then have a way, a procedural way, to ensure the public that we are operating in a safe and respectful school environment, such as our vision and our strategic direction mandates us to.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know if that's something, an initiative that.
I think the reporting back to the school board, back to the public, that, you know, how we're doing on that is getting better. Are we seeing more instances or less instances? This could certainly be one of the updates as we go forward. We can't go into detail or whatever, but we can certainly talk about those broader numbers and if we're seeing reduction.
That's what I'm looking for, yeah.
And also, the Minnesota Student Survey that's done every, what, three years? Two years? I lose track. Three. There are questions asked about how safe children feel in school and about bullying, and so that also is a little bit of a barometer for us as to how we're doing.
I'm looking for more of a feedback, more than every three years.
But, I mean, we've got that also.
Right, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Next is administrative reports.
Okay. This is always an exciting time of the school year, because we get to begin again and start fresh. And we're excited about the year ahead and the opportunities that it's going to bring to our students and families and to our staff. I had the opportunity this morning of greeting about thirty part-time and full-time staff members right here in this room, who will be getting with us at, next week, when all the teachers come back. They're in new teacher orientation this week, and meeting with mentors, learning about the district, getting a sense of their responsibilities and the high expectations that we have for all of our teachers in Prior Lake Savage area schools. So, that was really a great way to start Monday morning, was to see those new faces. And tonight, you heard great news too about our science tests and the good work that's going on there, access dollars tripling, and the good use of our federal jobs bill dollars. So, good things are coming together. Next Monday is all teachers come back. They work in their buildings and have their building meetings and welcome back meetings on Monday, and they're at their site. And then on Tuesday morning, we have an all-staff, and that's all staff, that's teaching, paraprofessionals are invited, custodians, secretaries, ESS staff, whoever would like to come, and school board, of course, is always welcome. We'd love to see you there at seven thirty at Prior Lake High School. And we're having a really good, exciting program for our staff to begin the year off with a bang, and we're looking forward to that opportunity to welcome everyone back and begin the year officially. And then, of course, they'll be in workshops throughout the week, and then we'll start school on September sixth. So, much is going on in the school district right now, lots of new beginnings, and we're very excited about having them begin right now. So, that's my report for tonight. Oh, one other thing, there's a flyer on your, at your table regarding the meth task force golf tournament, which is September ninth. The meth task force is a community group started by Pat Salbarretto to make sure that we as a full community are really addressing the use of meth in our community, reducing it, acknowledging that it is present in different areas, and educating our students both at the middle and at the high school level. And to that end, they raise funds so that they can do that in our schools, and they put on programs that are really impactful to our students. So, that is going to be on September ninth. Dave Lund, principal at the high school, and I will be sitting at one of the halls, welcoming the guests that choose to attend and play golf on that day. So, if anyone's interested in playing, we'd love to see you out there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other administrative reports? Yes.
Good evening again. Last week, I sent you an email with the attachments, one being the actual letter drafted by Education Commissioner Brenda Castellius to U.S. Department of Education Secretary Duncan requesting a provision of waiver from the No Child Left Behind Act, along with just really a notice of really what the state was seeking. As you, if you've taken some time to look at that, there are some very specific impacts that would happen to the district pending approval of this waiver. As of this time, we do not know the result of the waiver request. And so, it leaves the districts and, it leaves us, as well as other districts in the state, in somewhat of a caught-in-between sort of situation, because there are requirements for no child left behind that we're still held to. But, pending the outcome of this waiver, that certainly will impact how we proceed forward. Just interesting to note too, the district does have a AYP plan. It's been drafted over the last several years. Those plans, in addition to the Five Hogs Plan, are two-year plans. They are designed to be two-year plans. So, while we're waiting for a waiver request to be either denied or approved, we are going to move forward with the second year of our plan that our group, you know, put together, that the Five Hogs Committee put together, and with a great degree of confidence. You know, when our test scores come back, that will also help us to make, to validate or to adjust our plan moving forward. So, as this becomes more evident, as far as what the status of the waiver is and subsequent impact on the district, that again will be another report that I'll bring forward to the board.
Thank you.
I also have a committee report tonight, or administrative report. I sent out an email to the finance committee to discuss, to talk about a discussion I had with Joel Sutter from Ayers and Associates. Ayers and Associates is our financial consultant. We regularly review our bond issues to see if there's any chance that we can refinance our bonds. Right now, we have an option to look at refinancing two bonds in this next couple of months. And the one is the two thousand and five bond, refunding bonds. They've already been refunded once, but we do have an opportunity. They are callable in February of two thousand and twelve. And so, if we were to preliminary look at that, we could save about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. There's only five years remaining on that bond, and so I think that is a significant amount that we would want to review and look at. And the other is the two thousand and three building bonds. They're originally for about five million dollars. And we could save about three hundred thousand dollars in interest expense and over the life of the bonds. There are about ten years remaining on those bonds. They are not callable until February of two thousand and thirteen, so that would be a crossover bond, which means we would refund them early. We could save some money by refunding both of them at the same time, so some issuance costs could be saved. And so, I will be sending out a letter as soon as I receive the analysis back from Joel concerning this, and I'll send that letter out to everyone. And if the board is willing, we'll look at some dates that we would want to look at going out for a bit on those bonds. We've looked at some future dates right now. October tenth is our first board meeting in October, and unfortunately, that's Columbus Day, so we wouldn't be able to, the market isn't open that day, and so we'd need to look at some changes in how we could do that, unless we wanted to do it earlier in September. So, I just wanted to put that out there for your information, so that you knew that we were looking at that. It's a great opportunity for the district to save some interest on those bonds. And that would, if we were to do that, that would affect our two thousand and eleven pay, two thousand and twelve levy. And just an update on that, that information is not out yet from the Department of Education. I'm surprised it's not. But, we are looking at, just so you know, delaying our bond, our ability to levy or approving that levy most likely won't happen until sometime at the very end of September, and I believe that they will allow us to go into that first week in October. So, there could be a chance for a special meeting depending on when that information is available to districts to bring to our boards for the future. So, that's just an update on that. Also, one last thing. Our auditors have been out all last week. Our audit went very well. We have a few cleanup items, as we normally do at this time after they're gone, but it did go very well, and we're happy to report that. A big sigh of relief now that they're out of our offices, so. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other administrative reports? Okay, seeing none. Any board reports?
I have one.
Yes.
I was able to meet with the Early Childhood Advisory Council. I hadn't been able to do that yet, and they had a first meeting this last Monday, a week ago, and there was fifteen to twenty young parents, which was kind of nice. And it seemed like a very passionate group, very concerned about what's going on in the district, and just a great group, I think, just to be a sounding board for a lot of these things that I'm not always in tune with, the early education anymore. So, we did have a first meeting, and they have lots of, you know, great events planned. They did put out their new program guide this month, and I believe they're going with just one this year, which normally they'd have three. So, they had a full range of classes and just with a lot of good input from a lot of young parents, so it was a great meeting.
Okay. Any other board reports? I have just one. I sent out an email to everyone. MSBA is looking for a delegate from our area to serve on their legislative platform committee, and Dr. Grover has nominated Tom Anderson. I just want to open it up to the board. I haven't heard any responses. Anyone else interested in being nominated for this role? Well, maybe I'll use the prerogative of the chair to change the agenda here real quick. I'd like then to make a motion as a board to support Tom's nomination as a delegate to the legislative platform. If I could give a second?
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
You go with our support.
Thank you.
And Chris, you have an hour-long presentation PowerPoint video. Any updates from Susan Castle over the summer? We're going to catch you off-guard here first time.
That's all right. We've had two summer meetings already this summer to go over some stuff for the early year. We have our third one coming up next week. And then, we meet with the new students of the district on Monday, the twenty-ninth. We have a barbecue for them. They come in and we mingle with them, show them around the school. And then, on Tuesday, we have the freshman orientation that we help out with to kind of direct the new students to come, show them around the school. And then, Tuesday morning, we go in and bring donuts to the teachers to greet them as they come in for their first week of the school year.
Good. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain, oh, yes.
I've seen a sign from Gem Go, who wants to tell us about twenty-seven forty-four. You want to give us an update on that?
Okay.
An update is that we're working with the county, Excel Energy, and City Savage to work on the twenty-seven forty-four issue. The road will be open, so we'll be able to get our buses through on forty-four. However, there'll be no signal. It'll be a three-way stop, as it looks right now. And so, with Principal Lund, we're working with City Savage to help possibly get some officer out there to help direct, so we can move the buses through. There'll be quite a logjam there if we don't get some help. So, the good news is the road will be open. The bad news is there won't be light.
No impact to the stoplight up though on one hundred and fifty-fourth, right?
No, no.
Yes.
Do you know how long it'll be before there's a signal?
They're pretty cagey. They're not really seeing, so we don't know.
We've been judging by.
I don't blame them.
We've been judging by the number of XL trucks that are there, and Todd saw eight on Friday.
There was five there today.
They were putting up a poll today.
Yep, they're working on their power issues, XL. I'm not quite certain what their issues are, but they're working with the county. They're as interested in this getting finished as we are.
We're still somewhat, a tiny bit hopeful it could get done, although we're hearing that to signalize that intersection is a huge endeavor, and to get it done in two weeks is nearly impossible, even with them working around the clock on this. So, we're thinking it's going to be a stop sign, which is going to be difficult for our buses all to get through there at the beginning and end of, particularly the high school.
The high school run will be difficult, as there's a lot of traffic on that road, and if every car has to stop and then go, it'll take some extra time.
Is there any way we, as a district, can communicate that to the public to maybe avoid that area?
Well, you'll only do it once.
What's that?
You'll only do it once, because I've done it. But with one stop sign, it was bad. We'd certainly do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anything else? Okay. We have new teacher training, the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, back-to-school celebration at seven thirty at the high school, seven thirty in the morning, and then the first day of school on September sixth. Any other events that anyone can think of? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Tom, second.
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero, and we're adjourned. Thank you.